Good members, welcome to this special meeting of full council. Meeting is being live streamed and recorded and the recording will be made available on the council website for public listening. Could I remind councillors to follow the good practice guidance which includes muting microphones and switching off your video when you're not addressing the meeting, writing S or speaking in the team's chat function when you want to contribute rather than raising your hand. If you're in the hall you can do this on your iPhone or iPad. Those in the room without access to the team's chat, if you wish to speak, try and catch the attention of Nick Evans who will enter your name into the chat. Please don't repeat contributions already made by other members. No material should be posted in the chat function if it is intended as part of the discussion. The usual standing orders apply including that any votes will be undertaken by roll call. If any member has to leave the meeting, please either leave the team's meeting for that period of time or write 'leave' in the team's chat function and then join when you rejoin the meeting so we can keep track on whether the meeting is corred. All members should speak clearly and directly into the microphone when making contributions and when referring to reports, please provide reference to the relevant page and paragraph to allow everyone to follow. Please focus contributions on areas where clarification is required or to propose an alternative to a recommendation. Members may notice that when the calling members to speak are referred to them formally and using their title councillor so that it is clear who are councillors and who by the process of elimination are officers. Given the important item we have on the agenda today, I would seek members' cooperation in asking their questions, waiting for an answer and confirming if they are happy with the response without introducing supplementary questions. This will allow us to move in an efficient manner. I also draw members' attention to standard order 10.2.6 which states that mover of a motion or amendment shall not speak for more than five minutes. Each succeeding speaker shall not speak for more than two minutes and shall speak only once in the same discussion unless to call attention at a point of order or with the sanction of the convener to make an explanation. Accordingly, members not putting forward a motion... Could you please limit your contributions to two minutes? The mover of an amendment, mover of an original motion in that order shall have the right to speak for two minutes in reply, strictly confining him or herself to answering previous speakers and not introducing any new matter. Now moving on to the tabled agenda, decedent apologies. Vard, can you provide the decedent apologies please?
Thank you convener, I'm just waiting on the stats coming in. Good afternoon members, I can confirm we have 28 members present in the hall. We have 14 members present on the team's platform. We've received one apology and that's councillor Hislop. And there's no members not present at the meeting.
I also confirm my agreement to the participation of those members recorded as participating remotely. Item two, declarations of interest. Any members have a declaration of interest or statement of connection they wish to make? Nope. Item three, a Galway National Park full technical appraisal framework consultation paper. Report approved by Head of Economy and Environment. As this subject matter falls under the delegation of Economy and Infrastructure Committee, can we first agree to withdraw delegation so we can discuss it? Are we happy to agree to withdraw delegation? This report is to be reviewed for consideration as a draft response on behalf of the Freesian Galway Council on the Galway National Park full technical appraisal framework consultation paper. A current consultation on behalf of the Scottish Government. I think it is important to stress that we actually are providing a response to our consultation today. Steve Rogers, Head of Economy and Environment and Simon Fieldhouse, Environment Manager, are available to assist members with any questions on this report. Members will see that this is a comprehensive draft response that we have before us today. Members have all had the opportunity to feed into it through their political groups. To deal with this matter efficiently, I intend to go through the specific questions in turn in Appendix Two, starting with question two. Dealing with the technical issues first and would ask members that matters be raised by exception only. Following the completion of question nineteen, I will then move to question one A and one B, allowing time for debate first as to whether this council supports the idea of a new national park being established in the south west of Scotland and thereafter the reasons for that option taken. Please note that questions twenty and twenty-one relate to any other comments or evidence not already covered by the draft response. Accordingly, this will be populated by officers in light of anything additional that is discussed today. It's important to ensure that everyone is heard and is listened to. Therefore, I can remind members that should speak for no more than two minutes. So starting at question two A, page fifty-seven of your papers, and I'll go through all the questions and for any points members wished to raise by exception and at conclusion of question nineteen, we can look at question twenty-one. We will then go back to question one A and indeed decide at that point whether, how we're going to answer or even if we're going to answer. It's entirely up to members. So I will now open the floor to questions and comment on the first response question. Question two, has anyone got any comments on that particular answer? Councillor Wood and then councillor Scobie.
Yes, well it's alternatives for the national park in Galway. What I would suggest is that in actual fact, since I've come into the council as an elected member, I've seen the powers of a councillor being diluted time and again. And I just feel that we're diluting the council further. And I'd very much like to see us get some of our powers back as elected members as we represent the people within our ward. Each and every councillor represents their ward. And as such, I would like further economic support being given to the authority so that it can deliver what is required for Galway. And I see no reason why this cannot be done. So I would suggest that as a local authority, we require further powers, bring back our rangers that we had and give us the capacity to deliver. We've already seen the south west, so the south of Scotland Enterprise Board, they promised so much, they cost us over ten million pounds. They were to give us high wages in the area, which they have done, over a hundred working in their offices. I don't want to see another co-ango. So that's where I'm coming from in that and I hope those points are noted and get sent further up the line. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wood, councillor Scobie.
Yes, I could have seen your clarification first and that's, you started at page fifty-seven and will there still be opportunity to come back in on page fifty-six? I have two additions I would like to add in there.
I think that relates, does that relate to councillor, question one B? Councillor Scobie, in which case we will be coming back to that, definitely. Councillor Walters?
Sorry councillor Scobie. I'm still on page fifty-eight here, the penultimate paragraph. And it's along the lines of the economy and maybe more powers to the council. But in this part where it says in the south west of Scotland to focus on economic development and what I would ask the others to insert the words tackle rural deprivation and depopulation. To insert in there those words. And that therefore allows us to address some of the key sectoral development. I'm asking for those words to be included. Because you know in Galway, particularly in the west, we have a huge area of deprivation and depopulation. So in that respect, I would ask for those words and that's the ones that we've submitted.
Good members, welcome to this special meeting of full council. Meeting is being live streamed and recorded and the recording will be made available on the council website for public listening. Could I remind councillors to follow the good practice guidance which includes muting microphones and switching off your video when you're not addressing the meeting, writing S or speaking in the Teams chat function when you want to contribute rather than raising your hand. If you're in the hall you can do this on your iPhone or iPad. Those in the room without access to Teams chat, if you wish to speak, try and catch the attention of Nick Evans who will enter your name into the chat. Please don't repeat contributions already made by other members. No material should be posted in the chat function if it is intended as part of the discussion. The usual standing orders apply including that any votes will be undertaken by roll call. If any member has to leave the meeting, please either leave the Teams meeting for that period of time or write 'leave' in the Teams chat function and then join when you rejoin the meeting so we can keep track on whether the meeting is corred. All members should speak clearly and directly into the microphone when making contributions and when referring to reports, please provide reference to the relevant page and paragraph to allow everyone to follow. Please focus contributions on areas where clarification is required or to propose an alternative to a recommendation. Members may notice that when the calling members to speak are referred to them formally and using their title councillor so that it's clear who are councillors and who by the process of elimination are officers. Given the important item we have on the agenda today, I would seek members' cooperation in asking their questions, waiting for an answer and confirming if they are happy with the response without introducing supplementary questions. This will allow us to move in an efficient manner. I also draw members' attention to standard order 10.2.6 which states that mover of a motion or amendment shall not speak for more than five minutes. Each succeeding speaker shall not speak for more than two minutes and shall speak only once in the same discussion unless to call attention at a point of order or with the sanction of the convener to make an explanation. According to members not putting forward a motion... Could you please limit your contributions to two minutes? The mover of an amendment, the mover of an original motion in that order shall have the right to speak for two minutes in reply strictly confining him or herself to answering previous speakers and not introducing any new matter. Now moving on to the tabled agenda, decedent apologies. Vlad, can you provide the cedent apologies please?
Thank you convener, I'm just waiting on the stats coming in. Yep, good afternoon members. I can confirm we have 28 members present in the hall, we have 14 members present on the Teams platform, we've received one apology and that's councillor Hislop and there's no members not present at the meeting.
I also confirm my agreement to the participation of those members recorded as participating remotely. Item two, declarations of interest. Any members have a declaration of interest or statement of connection they wish to make? Nope. Item three, a Galloway National Park full technical appraisal framework consultation paper, report approved by head of economy and environment. As this subject matter falls under the delegation of economy and infrastructure committee, can we first agree to withdraw delegation so we can discuss it? Are we happy to agree to withdraw delegation? Yeah, thank you. This report is to be reviewed for consideration as a draft response on behalf of the Dunfries and Galloway Council on the Galloway National Park full technical appraisal framework consultation paper. A current consultation on behalf of the Scottish Government. And I think it is important to stress that we actually are providing a response to a consultation today. Steve Rogers, head of economy and environment and Simon Fieldhouse, environment manager, are available to assist members with any questions on this report. Members will see that this is a comprehensive draft response that we have before us today. Members have all had the opportunity to feed into it through their political groups. To deal with this matter efficiently, I intend to go through the specific questions in turn in appendix two, starting with question two. Dealing with the technical issues first and would ask members that matters be raised by exception only. Following the completion of question 19, I will then move to question 1A and 1B allowing time for debate first as to whether this council supports the idea of a new national park being established in the south west of Scotland and thereafter the reasons for that option taken. Please note that questions 20 and 21 relate to any other comments or evidence not already covered by the draft response. Accordingly, this will be populated by officers in light of anything additional that is discussed today. It's important to ensure that everyone has heard and has listened to. Therefore, I can remind members that you should speak for no more than two minutes. So starting at question 2A, page 57 of your papers, and we'll go through all the questions and for any points members wish to raise by exception. And at conclusion of question 19, we can look at question 20, 21. We will then go back to question 1A and indeed decide at that point whether, how we're going to answer or even if we're going to answer. It's entirely up to members. So I will now open the floor to questions and comment on the first response question. Question two, has anyone got any comments on that particular answer? Councillor Wood and then councillor Scobie.
Yes, well it's alternatives for the national park in Galloway. What I would suggest is that in actual fact, since I coming in to a council as an elected member, I've seen the powers of a councillor being diluted time and again. And I just feel that we're diluting the council further and I'd very much like to see us get some of our powers back as elected members as we represent the people within our ward. Each and every councillor represents their ward and as such, I would like further economic support being given to the authority so that it can deliver what is required for Galloway. And I see no reason why this cannot be done. So I would suggest that as a local authority, we require further powers, bring back our rangers that we had and give us the capacity to deliver. We've already seen the south west, so the south of Scotland Enterprise Board, they promised so much, they cost us over £10 million, they were to give us high wages in the area, which they have done, over 100 working in their offices. I don't want to see another co-ango. So that's where I'm coming from in that and I hope those points are noted and get sent further up the line. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wood. Councillor Scobie?
Yes, I could have said your clarification first and that's, you started at page 57 and will there still be opportunity to come back in on page 56? Like two additions I would like to add in there.
I think that, does that relate to councillor, question 1B councillor Scobie? In which case we will be coming back to that, definitely. Councillor Walters? Sorry councillor Scobie?
Yeah, I'm still on page 58 here, the penultimate paragraph and it's along the lines of the economy, maybe more powers to the council. But in this part where it says in the south west of Scotland to focus on economic development and what I would ask the others to insert the words tackle rural deprivation and depopulation, to insert in there those words. And that then follows through whilst this may address some of the key sectoral development, I'm asking for those words to be included. Because you know in Galloway particularly in the west, we have a huge area of deprivation and depopulation. So in that respect, I would ask for those words and that's the ones that we've submitted, tackle the rural deprivation and depopulation if that could be accepted.
Thank you councillor Scobie. What we're going to do councillor Scobie is we're going to keep a note of this until we're finished with the comments of question two, we're not going to move on to question three until we've dealt whatever that you've said. We're just trying to get some kind of way forward through this. Councillor Walters?
Thanks convener, sorry if I missed something right at the beginning there. When you say matters are to be raised by exception only, what do you actually mean? Are you saying we're only allowed to add things to the document as opposed to suggesting a change in the document or yeah, or something to be taken out?
Not at all, not at all councillor Walters, no, not at all. These responses here are responses to the questions from council officers. It's entirely within members' gift to change them in whichever way they see fit. Councillor Campbell?
Thanks convener, I think it'd be helpful if the number of amendments that Democratic Alliance group have submitted and I know that Vlad has copied all them, if they're maybe rot up on the screen, that may act as a prompt because I think we're all probably getting a bit confused by the running order.
Okay, now the running order should be relatively simple, it's just a matter of going through each question, listening to everybody's views, trying to encapsulate them. What I'm trying to do here is express the views of the council to this consultation in as fair and open a way as I can. So councillor Cruthers?
Actually, you have got a difficult job today, there's no two ways about that. And I'm not trying to add to that but I'm just trying to explain what my thoughts are in regards because you're asking specifically about question two and looking at question 2A at the bottom of page 57, are there any alternatives to the national park in Galloway that you would support in the question matter? But apologies to try and put in the context what I'm thinking, because I'm looking across the page at 59 and it's question 3A, if a national park was to be designated, which of these three options is presented? And we've got maps that are contained here, we've looked at the maps, they're colour coded and from what I can gather, our preferred option recommended is option three. Now it comes right across into Andale South. So I'm just trying to express that, listen, have we got a, so that's not Galloway National Park, if it comes into Andale and Estdale, near Leanne, sure Leanne and that is, that's a Dunfries and Galloway National Park. So I'm explaining where I am with this whole thing. I find it's very difficult to put real hard evidence based reflection on it and comments. And I am struggling with this so maybe you might find me coming back and forward trying to gather this as we go forward but that's where I'm coming from. You have got a difficult job convener, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you councillor Cruthers, I'm well used to you going backwards and forwards. Number of discussions. Is there anyone who wants to add anything to question two?
Councillor Burety? Yeah, thank you, thank you Chair. Given that there's two parts to question two A and B and it really revolves around the option which is highlighted here, the Galloway and Southern Eireshire biosphere and certainly on page 59 where the second paragraph says the greater potential of local and community buy-in if that was advanced. So I would agree with that, so I'm quite happy with the wording.
Thank you, are there any further suggestions? Vlad, can we put the, as councillor Campbell suggested, the motion or the suggestion, sorry, from the Democratic Alliance Group on the screen please?
Yep, we'll work towards that if so already. Question two, I think the reference was to depopulation in fact, got that correct and I think it's to tackle rural deprivation, depopulation, that'd be correct. And that's just there, hopefully members can see that.
Does anyone have an issue with adding that into the answer? Councillor Thompson?
No issue, but I do think that it's interesting at this point because question two A and B are effectively setting out our preferred position which is like an alternative model. And I think we'll maybe come back to that when we get to deliberate in question one because what's in front of us isn't necessarily what we would like. So I think bearing in mind, but I fully accept that in question two A and two B and happy to include that because I think we would always want to ask for what we think is going to be best for our region, so we're happy to support that, thank you.
Thank you very much. On that basis, can we now move on to question three, any comment on that? Councillor Hagman?
Thank you convener. So in terms of question three, there's obviously clearly the designation Hill Coast and Countryside is the preferred option within there which I absolutely support. I think it would be useful to capture within the narrative of question three B, in the second paragraph, it makes reference to the performance of the economy in that area and I think it would be really important to highlight the level of low paid jobs that already exist in this area. And also in terms of the third paragraph, it references SIMD, the Index of Social Depression. And actually I think it'd be really good to capture that SIMD doesn't necessarily work well in terms of capturing that reality point. I'm hugely aware that there's, because it's a postcode system, it doesn't always necessarily capture it. So although we have got these areas as highlighted, there's actually further areas that are not captured by the SIMD system because it's not set up for that element of reality.
Thank you councillor Hagman, so what, can you just spell out exactly what you would like incorporated?
So in the second paragraph on three B, which is on page 59, to include that the areas, there's persistent poverty and deprivation, including a low paid economy, a low wage economy, to just capture that aspect within this. And then in the third paragraph, it represents, it references the data zones and just to, as almost an asterisk, to note that SIMD is not the best method to capture rural poverty.
Is there any other suggestion councillor Cruthers?
Just going back to the point I was making earlier, it'd be better if, is that my getting an echo there or no? It'd be better if we could have seen the picture, so I'm looking at 3A and it's saying if a national park was to be designated, which of these three options is presented at map's four? If we could have seen the map, 4.1 sorry, if we could have seen the map on screen, I'd be able to explain it completely what I'm saying, I've touched it already but I'll go through it. If, I think what page is it on? It's page, let me see if I can see this on here. It should be just above 3A from what I can see in your questions. It's a colour code, it's black and white within the papers but the colour code makes it relevant, the colour coding. So the point I was making earlier was that if option one, it's contained fairly much to Galloway but predominantly Galloway Sturridge, so that could be even a bit large. Option two is option one and two, so you see that in colour code, when you see that physically on screen, you don't understand. Option three is options one, two and three combined is my understanding. Again, my understanding as you can see it there, maybe that needs to be enlarged for members to see, so you'll see the kind of, it's like a blue, I am colour blind but it's like a blue and it goes right over into Andale South, you'll see the estuaries that comes in up to the right hand side. So even if you take beyond option one, that's going at Galloway Sturridge, it could be, almost elbeet, it's outside, it's in the fringes of the way, I mean that's way beyond Galloway, it's a Galloway National Park in the name. I know it goes up into government and such like but that's a Dunfries and Galloway National Park, option three, and it looks to me like that's a preferred option being offered up by professional officers as a recommendation. Unless I'm reading that wrong, it's been highlighted on page 59. I would say at best we would ask for is option one if we were going to ask for anything at all but even when I look at that, a Galloway National Park would be a reduction, it would be hybrid of. So that's where, that's my thoughts in regards to that, option three is non-option, option two is non-option for me but option one even then, it's at the very extent of where it should be when it comes to being a Galloway National Park. Hopefully that makes sense. If I were to take any questions, if anybody's getting any clarity on that, when I get to the point in time, I can go through that again and rehearse it.
So I'm looking at the comments, option three, I mean it says Hills Coast and Countryside, I kind of, I kind of see that even a smaller area would encompass Hills Coast and Countryside.
So you look at the bar on the bottom left hand side, can you say aye, so is it bottom, aye, left hand side, it's, aye, it is. So the colour codes, from what I can gather and what it's saying there, if you look at option three, the colour codes, that includes the first two plus three which extends away beyond, even two actually has taken it away over across to Andale South, that's near Cralston, Commertry's Bank End, that kind of way, as you can see, I mean that's feral extent away, it's kind of a long, long way away for Galloway. I couldn't accept that, I couldn't support that. So I know this is very woolly as far as I'm concerned when it comes to the information that we've got, it's very high level, due in principle, it almost goes back to the economy and resources committee decision, do you support the principle of moving forward and actually seeing the further detail? There's nothing wrong with seeing any further detail but that's one of the things I would really want to highlight, as others on about public services and the pressures but when we came to that point. So that's my understanding, maybe an officer could come in and correct me in regards to that, it could be the way, convener.
Thank you, Liz, do you want to come in on this?
Thank you convener. Yeah, I'd just draw your attention to question 19A which does allow the opportunity for members to suggest an alternative name for a proposed national park. So if you don't feel that Galloway is representative, then there is the opportunity to suggest an alternative.
Thank you, I'm not entirely convinced this is the actual name, I think this is the area.
It's the size and scale, it is, no thanks, I can see how Liz has took it that way, going back to the way I convey things at times but it's not, it was about the size, the scale, the dominance of that, it's a Dunfries and Galloway. I'd be totally opposed to a Dunfries and Galloway National Park or the Kingdom of Galloways, it's outlined in there, a Galloway National Park, it's very big, that would be my thought, thank you.
Does anyone else have views on this map and the area that's shaded? Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, thanks convener, I mean I think this is, it's very hard to actually choose which would be the best imaginary national park because you know, we don't really know what the proposition is and each one of these has a case potentially for and against. If we're looking at it through a lens of economy and deprivation, that may or may not be something that helps particular areas that are recognised as areas of SIMD for example or others. So I'm sort of uncomfortable plumping for any of these particular options at this time because each of them have a case that could be made that would address some of the concerns or opportunities that we might see in some of those areas. And I think we're very much in the, it seems from question two A and B that we're very much in the mood for, well actually a new type of national park might be appropriate. So you know, it seems to be sort of an irrelevant question in a sense in that it's like, well how would you know which one would be the best area of designation given that we don't know how it would work? Because any one of them could be potentially a strong case. So I'm kind of uncomfortable with any particular answer to this but as long as we can capture something for each, I think I'm sort of relatively comfortable with that because it is very hypothetical at this point, thank you.
Thanks very much convener. Interesting what councillor Thompson's saying there and I think it's quite important to reflect on that and it's, the thoughts before I came into this full council meeting today was that how on earth do we make a properly formed decision by the way of a council to say, listen, this is our position and it sounds like councillor Thompson's got the same thoughts as myself, going back to that, you've got a number of different impacts in regards to what's being proposed and how do we reflect that, how do we actually put that back? So I just wonder if the streamlined way of doing this and actually going back to, can it not be our default position? That actually we reflect back and we submit our own individual submissions as elected members in this case, for, against or otherwise, whatever we want to think and our default position is going back to the decisions that we're making if I remember correctly at the Economy and Resources Committee. Whereas in principle, it's not off the table, it's still sitting there but ultimately we agreed to the principle at that point. I don't think that was a bad decision, we didn't agree for it to happen but the principle of taking it forward and to me it was still, because of the level of information we've got there, we've got to go back and forward, I can see it coming, maybe test it a bit further but I think this is the kind of question that we've got to have and coming back and forward, back and forward and it's how do we actually come to that agreed position as a council? Very difficult, we make lots of decisions, different committees, this is one, this'll test us for sure to come to some of those fairly competent, concise and something that the nature Scottish government can consider properly. I think it would be better just to have an individual submissions and come back to our default position, the decisions already been made back at Economy and Resources.
Thank you. Is there any further contribution on this question? Councillor Dorwood?
Thank you Chair, and having listened to your introduction, you've been very clear that this is just part of the consultation, it's part of a bigger process, it's not the end of the process. So with that in mind, I think question three A, it says if a national park was designated, it doesn't say a national park is designated. I think we need to keep that as councillor Thompson said, as a hypothetical question and treat it as such at the moment rather than going into the detail too much because we're still at a part of the consultation, the beginning of the consultation process as opposed to at the end of it. And I think if we did get to the end of it, the devil would be in the detail at that point in time as opposed to right now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Walters?
I was in the, I couldn't agree with councillor Carruthers actually about the map but I think we've chewed over enough actually and I think, having looked at it, I think we're going to have to go with a principled decision rather than saying that. What I did wonder was whether we should be adding something to question six, which is under the options one, two, three and then other, it says question six, along question, the answer to question six is about adding marine areas. I did think whether we should have something that leaves it open as to the boundaries because talking to people in my ward, they don't regard themselves as part of the Galloway in any sense because they're on the east side of the north. So I did wonder whether we should be putting something into question six which we'll come to, which basically suggested that the boundaries are still open to discussion. Thanks.
Councillor Dugby-Campbell?
I'll diswithrow, thanks.
Councillor Drysdale?
Good afternoon members, thank you very much for the meeting. It was just to put a couple of points across and possibly through yourself Chair, ask a question of the authors of the report, the council officers. I think for the public, you know, we've been attending a lot of the consultations in person and every single one of those bar this Stenar one, there's a definite feeling of no. I just find it very difficult that we are answering hypothetical questions on behalf of the council, which I understand you have to do but have we had to do that at this date before Nature Scott are giving us the chance to see what the public are saying? So the council are giving the answer to this consultation, all the answers that they, you know, they perceive to be the correct ones but they're all hypothetical. Surely we should be doing this after the next set of Nature Scott's consultations are referenced to? Thank you Chair.
Lisa?
Thank you convener. So yeah, the council aren't legally obliged to respond so it is very much up to members whether they wish to do a response clearly as the significant footprint in terms of being cross our local authority, they will consider our response to be, you know, quite, have a lot of strength attached to it if you like in terms of their considerations so, but it is within our gift as to whether we choose to respond or not.
Councillor Marsh?
Thank you convener. I would tend to agree with what councillor Dorwood had said and in part what councillor Carruthers had said. In my opinion, where we are now doesn't really differ from where we were on the 30th of January 24 when we agreed in principle to the bid. There are a lot of unanswered questions and that detail still does not remain but I would suggest that... that we are no different than what we were on the 30th of January, when we supported in principle, and I believe we should be supporting in principle today, to tend to support, to get us to that next stage, because our council response will hold a lot of weight, as will south and east Ayrshires. And when we get to that next stage, hopefully tending to support today, that, that detail would come, where we can take more informed decisions on things like precise boundaries, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, did you want to come in?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. It's really just to pick up on the, the point about the stage that we're at in the process at the moment. And just to be clear, that the, should Scottish ministers decide to proceed, having received the report from Nature Scot, then the next stage would be the publication of a draft designation order, and the designation order itself would include the full detail of the powers, responsibilities and the proposed area. And the council would, at that point, have a further opportunity to respond to those, to those details. The other point I was going to make, Convenor, picking up on, on some of the conversation, is that there is an opportunity in responding to the consultation at this stage, for us to indicate strongly to Scottish Government, those areas of their current proposals, insofar as they go into any detail where we have concerns, and those areas where we perhaps are comfortable and are supportive. And, and that might help to shape the next stage, Convenor?
Thank you. And looking to the answer to the question three A, that councillor Walters pointed out, we've got option one, hills and coast, option two, hills and extended coast, option three, hills, coast and countryside, and then other, see question six. Councillor Bell?
Okay, Chair, this is a council response, it's maybe not a response to what members, the public want, but at the end of the day, where, where does the National Environment Bill fit into this? I believe it's due to be published in a couple of weeks' time, so where, where does that fit in with this?
Steve?
Convenor, yes, so we do understand that there is a forthcoming Natural Environment Bill, and it's been trailed by Scottish Government, but it has not yet been published. And we do understand that the initial proposals contained within the consultation that was carried out a couple of years ago, on a wider matter, did indicate that they would look, the Scottish Government were proposing through the bill to adjust some of the main aims and objectives of national parks as set out in the legislation. And they were also proposing to make some changes to the governance structure for national parks, to increase the amount of Scottish Government directly appointed board members, and also to confer additional powers on themselves to appoint the convenor and deputy convenor of the National Park Authority Board, rather than the board itself being able to elect its own convenor and deputy convenor. So those, those were, two years ago, the thoughts of Scottish Government, but what we don't know at the moment is whether those have carried through into an actual published bill. And once the bill is published, we will have the opportunity then to, to respond and make our, make our views clear.
Chair, and Chair, through the convenor again, obviously this report should, we should, this report should have been timed after the National Environment Bill, with a fuller picture.
Unfortunately, we didn't dictate the consultation period. Councillor Wood?
Thank you, Chair. It's actually picking up on what councillor Marsh was talking about, how in principle, this was voted through by a single committee, twenty, twenty-one members, not the full council. And by actually voting for this in principle, again, it's the full council that is going to be doing it, which endorses the last vote in principle. And to me, that's quite a worrying position, especially when I am opposed to the whole suggestion of a national park.
Thank you. So as far as the option one, two, three and the other is concerned, I, I think the suggestions made by councillor Hagman were captured, is that correct? And we're happy, I think everyone's happy with that. There's not a problem with that. That's what our answer is going to be to one, two, three or other. And then that leads on to three B, third line down, option three embraces the best technical scenario. Councillor Deppster?
My apologies, Convenor, it took my while to get my, my computer operational. Two observations, if you like. One is I'm not happy at all at suggesting we disregard the current means of establishing deprivation by use of S I M D, unless there's an alternative option available to us for establishing where deprivation is concentrated. I think we should still continue with that mechanism at present. And then I think, just for debate, and not necessarily a proposal, but every one of these questions three A's talks about hills and coasts, hills and extended coast, hills, coast and countryside, and yet we disregard the highest village in Scotland, which is of huge importance to this region, and we disregard the Southern Upland Way, which are coast-to-coast national walkways. So I think there's been a lack of a, maybe, thought by the government who drew up the plan, but that just an observation, I don't know whether we could at this stage introduce, and other, which is related to question six, but certainly, we're not encompassing everything I don't think we should be doing in this particular proposal, but thanks for that, Convenor.
Thank you. I think councillor Hagman, I think when you were talking about the, the postcodes, you were, you were really wanting to extend it rather than restrict it, I think was the, the way forward. So, question three A, do we have a, do we have a suggestion? Councillor Carreras?
Thanks, Convenor. Mine's was other, and I put that forward. It was other. I just think the proposal one, two or three is too large. To the largest it should be is one, but certainly not beyond it. That's my view. Again, I'll come back to my principles, is that it's far too early. We should be making these submissions individually rather than a collective council, but it should be other at best.
I think we can still make individual submissions anyway, and I would advise anyone, everyone to do so. Are people happy to accept other as the answer to that question? Yep. So we're going with that, but does that then lead us to change in the third line? Option three embraces the best technical scenario. Lisa?
Thank you, Convenor. Can I suggest that if we go with, or if members go with other for question three A, then potentially that means we don't give a response to three B, and we move directly to question six? So I think we just, whether, if we could just clarify that, please.
Thank you. Would people be happy just to use question six? Not really, because I think we wanted to bring in some of these other points, I think. So I, I really, I do, I do think it's a third line or the start of the paragraph, I think, potentially, even if it was changed to potentially embraces or could embrace or whatever. Has anyone got an issue with that? Councillor Carreras? Hope we've got a few, good.
I'm just thinking, if we're agreeing other or option four, whatever you want to call it, if it was option four, you didn't say option four embraces rather than, or other, the other option embraces, I, I would have that as an argument anyways. We could use the same language, but ultimately, it can be delegated to, I think it's, as we're talking about, anyone's the leader and the five, and the five leaders along with yourself, for the final i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed.
Thank you. Councillor Law?
Since if we want to go for other, we've already got option one and two would fragment, why do we just not do option three could embrace, so that it shows that we've at least considered it, and it takes into account the other information? So just add a word.
Thank you. Councillor Barretti?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Options one, two and three, irrespective of which one you choose, option six would fit into any one of those, because it does say that it's flexible to then drawing up a detailed, so it's, it, it gives the option there of option six to change any one of those options prior that have been mentioned.
Thank you. So I think, I was, I was still content to go with other to the answer to that question. Yes. Yeah. And nobody's otherwise minded. So do we change that third line?
I think we've got no option, because it, it's, it's edifying a completely different option through what we're preferring, our preferences is other, and I think we can leave that. I mean, I'm happy enough to leave that to the five, the five leaders and yourself, along with official support, Convenor.
Councillor Dugie-Campbell?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Not entirely happy about moving to question six, if, if that's what the proposal is, because I've, I've got a, a proposed amendment in relation to question four. I was reluctant to actually raise this, but, you know, obviously there's competing views about boundaries and other, other matters. And I have submitted a motion to question one A, which might go some way to address these areas of, of difference. But we'll have to get to that when we, we do get to it. But just for the benefit of all members, I, I think the motion gives us an option in relation to one A that we'll get to in due course. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
I suppose I should probably preference this by saying, you know, consultations are often a way of funneling you towards certain answers, and, and I would, I would rather we included the technical considerations that are included with regard to options one, two and three, without necessarily specifying a best or optimal option, but allowing the space for, for that to be considered as other. And, you know, sometimes it's a wee bit of kicking it back to Nature Scot and saying, well, we can't pick any one of the three, but there's aspects of each of them that we have a technical response that we're happy to, to share in terms of, if it aligned with this, then that would tie in with, you know, Borderlands place, you know, whatever it might be. But, but even then, it sort of depends, well, if it was a planning regime associated with it, that might conflict with some of the Borderlands place, you know, so don't know, depends. So I think if we capture the technical aspects and maybe just challenge Nature Scot a bit and say, well, we don't like the way this has been funneled toward option one, two and three, we've got things to say about each of them, and potentially other bits we might like to add. So if there's a way we can, I mean, it's not breaking the law to do that, is it? No. So I mean, I mean, I, I would exercise our authority as much as we can in this, because this is our chance to do this part of it. If that, that's just my view though. But thank you.
So we'll leave that, we'll answer other, and we'll add councillor Hagman's comments to the technical part, and we're happy with that. We'll move on to question four, is that the mood? Thank you. So question four, councillor Campbell, you said you had something to raise on that.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. This is one of the amendments that I submitted in relation to page sixty, question four, first paragraph. At the end of the sentence, the disinclusion of a marine environment would make the new national park a first for Scotland. I'm proposing that we add, comma, however, we recognise that careful analysis of the potential negative impact on the local fishing economy will be required before any decision is made to extend currently proposed national park areas beyond Galloway shorelines.
Thank you. Is there anyone objecting to that addition? No. We all had a chance to read it. Yep. So we're happy with that. So we move on to question five? Thank you. Any comment on question five? Councillor Hagman?
Thank you, Convenor. It's in relation to question five, let me get this right, C, and the narrative on there around the Galloway and Southern Ayrshire biosphere. I'm, I'm slightly concerned by the framing of the wording of this, so I'll read it out, it's on page sixty one. While the work of the GSA biosphere has started to process of recognition and valuing the wider geographical area, at present the area is fragmented and would benefit from an additional designation that coherently drew together all individual assets. There's over seven hundred and twenty-seven UNESCO biospheres across the world, there's over two hundred and seventy-five million people living in biospheres, and I think for us to make a blanket statement that the biosphere is fragmented and would benefit, I don't think it's for us to make those comments about a UNESCO designation. The criteria for having that UNESCO designation is fiercely contested, as I'm sure some of you are aware. I think it was Liverpool City lost its designation, and there was a huge outcry for that. And certainly when you look at, you know, the, the roles of that, a UNESCO designation looks at conservation, it looks at economic development, and it looks at logistical support. So I'm not here to champion the biosphere as such, although I do think they do a fantastic job, but I just, I would be really cautious that we are making that disparaging comment about a separate organisation that we actually support. So I, I, I would be, I guess my suggestion is that we remove that it says that the area is fragmented and would benefit. Additionally, it says that there's a potential to maximise the appeal, not just for local residents and communities, but for visitors and businesses. I would suggest that actually our European colleagues know far more about a UNESCO biosphere than perhaps our local residents. So again, I'm not sure if that's particularly accurate, so I potentially ask for, for that wording to be reconsidered and some of those comments removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any suggestion as to the wording, councillor Hagman?
To be fair, I would, I would just leave in that we acknowledge the work of the biosphere, and that it started the process of recognising and valuing the wider geographic area, and leave it as a full stop. Everything else in that sentence is actually framed in quite a negative way, and I don't, as I say, I don't feel it's our role here to make such disparaging comments about one of our third sector organisations.
Steve?
Convenor, thank you. Very happy to have another look at the wording in this part, Convenor. Bearing in mind the comments that councillor Hagman has made, I, I do wonder if perhaps the way in which that has been expressed doesn't reflect what the intent was, because it certainly wasn't intended. And just to be clear, it's not intended to be any criticism of the biosphere itself. I think it's just the way in which this is worded.
In which case, how would you propose to change the wording?
I'll get back to you on that, Convenor.
Okay. So I would actually rather have, I'm hoping to go through each question and have a definitive answer at the end. So, and I know it's a big ask, but we, 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 we need, we need to do it. Otherwise, we'll be reconvening another meeting to discuss the amended consultation response, and I really, really don't want to be doing that. So we need to think quite carefully how we do that. I, I think councillor Hagman's right. I think the work of the biosphere, Steve?
I did say, Convenor, that I would come back to you on it. So, yeah, having had another look at that paragraph, I think we feel that just taking that wording out after, as councillor Hagman has suggested, would, would sharpen it up and make it absolutely clear what the intent is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You see, see, we, you can get quick results at times. All you need to do is threaten another meeting of full council. So are we happy with question five now? Yep. So we're now on to question six. Now we have, do we have suggestions on that from anyone?
Councillor Driver.
Councillor Driver? Oh, no, he's withdrawn. Do we have any suggestions on question six? Are we happy with that? I'm not getting any indication of any suggestion on that, so we'll move on to question seven. Councillor Hagman.
Thank you Convenor, yeah, me again, apologies. It references any existing functions and powers from recent legislation. I think maybe perhaps councillor Bell might want you to repeat some of his comments earlier within that, but my concern is there's no mention in here and I've, you know, double checked looking back at PAGDA five point one of the European Charter of Local Self-Government, of which local councils are signed up to as a Scottish government as part of the Verdi House Agreement and there's a bill going through Parliament. So certainly when you look at what is the European Charter of Local Self-Government, it states that local authorities are acting within the limits of the law and are able to regulate and manage public affairs under their own responsibilities in the interest of the local population. So if that's going to be embedded into our, into our Parliament and the bill's going through, I think it needs to be recognised as part of this legislation. I think also just touching upon South Ayrshire's council decision, they made as part of their recommendation to the Cabinet that they agreed that the functions and governance arrangements associated with the National Park Authority should not remove or dilute existing powers of, and then inserted South Ayrshire Council. I think I would be pleased to see that we insert Dumfries and Galloway Council and then reference it as part of the European Charter of Local Self-Governance because that is a piece of legislation while not maybe through the parliamentary process, it's certainly on its way through the parliamentary process. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a very sensible suggestion. Steve, is that a possibility?
Convenor, yes, certainly we can, we can adapt the wording to include those, those comments.
Yeah, well, we'll refer back to question six, can we, can we adapt them? Adapt them now?
Can I suggest we literally just add the wording in that councillor Hagman read out as an addition and then that will meet that?
I don't think councillor Hagman did read it out, which is part of the problem.
I didn't read it out, I said it out loud and the meeting's being recorded, is it not? So you'll be able to get that back. Thank you.
We can lift that from the, from the recording and then we can move on. So is there anyone else? Councillor Cruthers.
I just think it was right enough councillor Hagman brought up the National Environment Bill, I think. So maybe that should be included as well, I'm not just sure. I think that's the point she was making in regards to what councillor Bell had mentioned earlier.
Thank you. So we incorporate that as well. So we're happy to move on to question eight? No?
Could I come in please Chair?
Sorry, Pauline, councillor Drysdale.
That's okay, sorry, I just put my hand up Chair rather than type in, so apologies for that. Yeah, I think we need to make sure the wording for that is really concise because it states in question seven that are there any further existing functions, powers from recent legislation? So can we make sure that the wording is legally correct, that it's future legislation that we wish to be encompassed in the future decisions and the response from the council? And as we've already referred to, that must take account of the National Environment Bill because there are going to be huge changes afoot. Thank you Chair, thanks everybody.
Thank you, I think councillor Hagman's agreeing to that. That's, that's fine and again, it's recorded so Steve can capture that. So question eight, do we have any comment or discussion on that? No. Question nine.
I'm waving about here. Yeah, question nine just gave me some concern and it's very much along the lines of what Katie just read out in terms of self-determination, not diluting the powers of the authority, Dumfries and Galloway or any other authority here. But it talks in terms of, and Jimmy Dempster referred to earlier, taking out the southern upland way and I could see some logic in that, but not the Mullagh-Galloway coastal trail, Rinsigalloway coastal path. That's integral to the whole of the park, if that is what's coming forward. To me, there's a lot of uncertainty in this document and whether it's the right time to be looking at this, but I think we should, you know, make reference to what Katie had just said to this as well and that it is properly resourced, that the council is not denuded of any funding that it would get to progress their projects, as the Rinsigalloway is incorporated into that in terms of our coastline objective from Gretna right round to Kieran Ryan. A serious worry in there.
Thank you. So just for clarity, what are you proposing? Could you put your microphone a wee bit closer as well?
The same word refers to this as well, that's referred to in, is it item six, question six, that we don't want to see any denusing of the powers or the council or any other body in Dumfries and Galloway.
Okay, can we incorporate that into there? I thought it's possibly really encompassed with the previous answer, but we'd reference it, I suppose, yeah. Yeah, thank you. It's been adopted in there. Okay, so question ten. Oh, sorry councillor Hagman, yeah, that's all your name.
No, it's fine, I appreciate the opportunity to come back in again. So certainly in question nine, in terms of becoming an access authority, I note the comments about the concerns of the areas out with whatever area, if there is going to be an area and the logistics of staffing etc. It references the southern upland way, the Mull coastal path, the Rinsigalloway, it doesn't mention other, other outdoor access issues such as cycling and horse riding etc. And aware that there was a project of creating a horse trail through the, through southern Scotland, but also the Seven Stains and these are areas for outdoor access as well. So while we've focused, focused on some of these walking out areas, access actually covers cycling, horsing, basically anything that, horsing, horse riding even. So it's just to ensure that we capture that aspect as well to include cycling provision, mountain biking and the Seven Stains. Thank you.
I have assurance that that's going to happen. So question ten.
Sorry Chair.
Oh, sorry Pauline, I thought, I thought that was your hand still left up from the last time.
No, you're okay, it's me again. I'd just like to mention on page sixty three with question nine, the second paragraph, we see across other national parks that the infrastructure funding comes for the coastal paths, which is very much accepted, but there's no mention in this document with regards to the additional infrastructure that's required and in the other parks we've had to, I've certainly had discussions with farmers who've had to actually fund, find the funding to build their own car parks and put in kissing gates because of the issues with access. So I'm just wondering if we can word that in the document somewhere to ensure that the Scottish government with any national park, whether it goes, if it does go ahead, then they have to actually assure us as Dumfries and Galloway Council to protect our constituents, those who pay their taxes and rates etc, that we are not going to have to be the burden for those additional costs that may come in terms of car parks and other infrastructure that cannot be funded. So I don't know how we put that in the document, but I think it's very important not just to assume that it's just the actual coastal paths, but there's a whole load of excess and additional infrastructure that Katie, that councillor Hagman's referred to, you know, for bridle paths, gates etc, that that is all incorporated in this document under question nine so that our constituents are not burdened with those additional costs. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. As question nine, the appropriate answer for, for that, Steve?
Convenor, there is in question nine E reference to additional costs, making it clear that the council does not have the budget to incur any additional costs, this is page sixty four. The council does not have the budget to incur any additional costs or see a reduction in funding in relation to the establishment and ongoing delivery of a national park authority regardless of the model. Resources needed to deliver any national park model will need to be in addition to existing resources invested in public bodies across Dumfries and Galloway. So that's under question nine E, so it's specifically in relation to the role in relation to access and other related infrastructure.
Thank you sir. We're happy that's covered. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. So we'll move on to question ten. Any comment on that?
My name's Convenor.
Oh, sorry Jim.
Actually, it's just another observation Chairman, or something for members to consider. If we're serious about including the biosphere in the consultation or the consideration of the document, we don't want to get us in a situation where we were to divide the biosphere in two and exclude half of it in any national park, there should be an absolute inclusion or exclusion I would suggest because there's nothing worse than confusing, what's already a confusing situation. So some of my words in the biosphere and it's certainly no featured in the proposal for a national park, I think that's something you had dealt with at some stage before we came to finding this out. Thanks Convenor.
Okay, I think that comes into the, councillor Blake, I think you've had dealings with the biosphere, haven't you?
I have, I've only recently taken over as the council's representative on that. I've attended a couple of their meetings where they discussed the national park and they have put in their own submission. I've made it clear in that, that where they did go through a voting process on it, that I abstained on both accounts because we had still to discuss, to discuss it here, but it's just to let you know that they have made their own submission.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to question ten, was there any comment on question ten? No. Question eleven, any comment on that? Question, councillor Hagman.
Thanks, thank you Convenor. I think in terms of question twelve and looking at the proposals first, size and competition of a park board, I think I would add that my comments made previously in relation to the European Charter of Local Self-Government are exactly the same at this point. So the wording that I said previously, I would ask to be repeated and inserted once again just to strengthen that point. Thank you.
Thank you. I must admit, I would support that myself. So anything, anything else on that one? No. Question thirteen. Oh councillor Walters was on question twelve.
No, that was question thirteen actually.
That was quick.
That was, yeah. No, just, I just, I was, to include expertise on nature, farming and forestry, that seems to me like, yes, that seems like a straightforward recommendation we should be asking the Scottish ministers to, especially as the, on question thirteen B, it says what other areas of expertise would the board require? It doesn't actually mention farming, it mentions a few other bits and bobs, rural, rural economic development and stuff like that. So to me, it would make sense to, to ask the Scottish minister to appoint people with expertise in those areas. Thanks.
Thank you. Has anyone otherwise minded with that one? Councillor Jamieson.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that and we'll reference thirteen B as well. Farming and forestry cover the large majority of Dumfries and Galloway, including Galloway obviously. There's vague mention of rural skills and development, it's slightly patronising. I think farming should most definitely be included in this. Commercial dairy farms are really important to this region and they should have a proper say and not be patronised by saying that Nature Scotland is going to offer advice on rural skills and how to maximise the potential of the national park. I'm not being glum with that, but it's a common theme in this that the farming industry must be represented.
Thank you councillor Marsh.
Thank you Convenor. Yeah, when reading question thirteen B, I took from the wording sectoral interests, that would encapsulate your regional chair of NFU, your regional chair of the milk marketing board, which then, as councillor Jamieson said, would represent those sectors.
But I do, I do think that should be made explicit, I think personally in thirteen A, the current, the current answer is don't know. Well, clearly I think the answer should be yes. Scottish minister appointments and boards who include expertise on nature, farming and forestry, that seems eminently sensible to me. Councillor Scobie.
Yeah Chair, I see all these being recognised, but what about the people? Whether they come in the communities and so forth, that they are represented, not just, you know, with farming and all the other things that are down here, we're, you know, there are people, there are folk, and they're about people and how it affects them. So I feel they should be represented in some way, no, no in some way, but they should be represented and by appointment. In fact, I support appointment though.
Councillor Marsh.
Thank you Convenor. Just to come back on councillor Scobie's point there, I think as part of that board election process, constituents themselves are given the ability to vote for individuals from their communities, I believe.
Thank you Convenor. It's really just to come back in on the question of thirteen A and thirteen B. So the reason that the papers have included the response, the suggested response, don't know, was really because thirteen A specifically refers to Scottish minister appointments and right the way through the document, we have flagged and raised concerns about the level of direct Scottish government appointments on the board. So it seemed to, it seemed to be counterproductive or counterintuitive to then welcome and accept Scottish minister appointments to the board including that expertise because that expertise, as we've maybe just heard, can be sourced elsewhere locally, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a direct appointment by Scottish ministers.
So what you're saying Steve is that by putting don't know to that part, we then, because basically what you're trying to imply there, I think, or imply, is that if we answer yes, then it limits that to expertise on nature, farming and forestry, is that, is that correct? Is that your premise of your argument?
No, I think the, Convenor, the, so thirteen B would, would provide that opportunity to highlight any other areas of expertise, but the reason that we suggested saying either know or don't know is that it comes across as us condoning direct ministerial appointments onto the board, which is inconsistent with what we're saying in other parts of the response.
Thank you councillor Dempster, do you want to come back?
Maybe jumped the gun, Convenor, my observation might be more appropriate in question fourteen, so I'll hold to fourteen if you don't mind.
Thank you councillor Cruthers.
Just agree with the comments that Steve, Steve's just come up with, I think it's absolutely right, so it's about keeping it local predominant as much as we can, it's to me if, if the ten million pound budget is expanded so to speak, then that would be the case if it ever happens.
Thank you. So in that case, going across to councillor Jamieson's comments.
Yeah, I'm content with that as long as it's accepted that these are important parts of the, of the board going forward. I do understand the need for the local farmers because the local farmers in NFU have got more insight into what's happening at Galloway, so it gives that flexibility as long as they've got insurance that the relevance of these stakeholders are acknowledged.
Thank you. Is there a case then for strengthening the wording about thirteen B to explicitly include those groups?
Yeah, if we could find some sort of wording just to make sure that that is, that is an expectation, I'm happy for the officials to work on that, to get the wording right as long as it emphasises that.
that these are important sectors, maybe not in terms of numbers, but in terms of the land beasts and food and farming and nature, it's really important that there's a local knowledge there.
Councillor Drysdale?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of points. Could we please include fishing potentially, if the border extends to that? We need to consider our fishing industry. Fishing, farming and forestry are the three biggest industries alongside tourism, so we must take concise with that, if that's possible. Thank you, Chair. And also, we are, our inboxes are filled, have been filling up the last few months, and specifically, we've been hearing a lot about how the voices of young people are not being heard. Is there any way of including somebody young that can represent those people across Dunfries and Galloway, and especially in the West, for this document, before it goes forward? So some advice on that through yourself, Chair, from Steve would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I think councillor Drysdale, this is our council response, and it's limited to that. We're not necessarily speaking for, for the youth council or the youth parliament, really, but Steve?
Convena, thank you. I think that is a good point in terms of perhaps we should be putting a message back that any composition of the board should make provision for the inclusion of young people. So we will, we will come up with a form of wording and perhaps, as you suggested, include reference to the youth council.
Thank you. And also reference to fishing and that, skills set for that one. Okay. Yeah. How can we incorporate councillor Scobie's suggestion about the wider community? Steve, or is that covered elsewhere in the document? Or is it covered as councillor Marsh had to understand by the appointments to the board?
It is covered at the moment under the legislation in that it does provide for the opportunity for directly elected representatives from the community to, to come forward onto the board. Thank you, Chair.
Are you happy with that, councillor Scobie? Not really, I could tell by looking at his face.
So it encapsulates that we do get the community's voices heard in there, and they can reflect a number of issues. There's no reference to health in there, NHS or anything, so it's not just all of it farming and land, it's other things as well that would be affected by a national park, whether it ever comes off or not.
Thank you. Councillor Dorbut?
Thanks, Chair. I know we're talking about question thirteen, but I think it's been covered, I'm quite assured by that, the comments and the writing in question twelve B, which says the councillors have the view that the board should reflect local accountability as well as local representation, is covered, I think, as in detail there needs to be at the moment. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for that observation. Question fourteen, do you have any... Oh, oh dear. I think councillor Scobie was first out of the box.
Yeah, Chair, as another topic, I think we should include there, improving and upgrading trunk, trunk road infrastructure, that will be the seventy-five, seventy-six and the seventy-seven. No, it's topics for fourteen. Says for topics that National Park Subcommittee they can look at. I think that's crucial, because we've got a lobbying group on the council for these roads, or at least two of these roads. I think we needed three of them well before National Park actually even considered.
Thank you. You were pipped at the post, I think, by councillor Bell, actually. Do you guys still...
Well, thanks, Convena. Obviously, the NHS, probably the biggest employer in Dunfries and Galloway, you've got the police and fire rescue service, they, they should be, they should be consulted, obviously, a group there. Also, if we've got defence of this country, the RAF, and you've got the military involved in Dunfries and Galloway, they, they should have to say as well, because I know the national parks and some other, some other areas, they've complained about low flying, they've complained about the military, but we need the military in this country and they should be properly consulted as well.
Thank you. Councillor Dugie-Campbell?
Thanks, Convena. I guess that in terms of topics and subcommittees and advisory groups, it would be in the gift of any national park board wants established. I'd be interested to know why there's a gap between biodiversity and climate change, and I wonder what was in there that's maybe been taken out, but I'll, I'll try and add something. I think what we want would be a, a national park that is responsive to local communities and engages with local communities across all of these areas. So my suggestion would be to fill that wee gap with a community engagement panel or something along those lines, that they make sure that they're not operating within a, closed group, but they're actually formally reaching out to communities and have appropriate representatives to effectively scrutinise and discuss proposals coming forward from the, the national park board.
Thank you. Councillor Dempster?
Thanks, Convena. My point partly covered in the last item by councillor Drysdale, but if you look at the first two suggested areas for focused tourism and biodiversity, I would want to see us engage with in this district salmon fishery board and have them involved in any consultations. Important to some of the economic opportunities within the region, it's important that, that they're involved in any consideration for the topics National Park Committee could explore and, and support. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got three suggestions of areas to be added, added in. We've got a community engagement panel, and I'm assuming everybody's going to be happy with that. Well, these, councillor Scobie's comments about the roads, I think that, do we want to broaden that out to infrastructure, including roads, or, or just roads? Sorry, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, just on that point, I'm comfortable with that being there. I was going to come back to it when we get to question one B, because it mentions travel and connectivity in there, but happy for that to be strengthened at this place, because there'd be, I would expect, there'd be, I would hope, would we challenge through this consultation, national government to actually come forward and say, this is the type of infrastructure we need from a national lens to support what might a national park look like in the region, rather than us sitting in the region going, oh, we could do a better infrastructure in a rail station. That has, there has to be some push from, if this is a national designation, I would suggest that we want to push from both sides, saying, you need to actually deliver connectivity nationally, so that we can then help manage that locally or whatever. And that would include trunk roads, rail strengthening, all the rest of it. So if councillor Scobie's happy with that, then happy to do that there and at section one B.
Okay, councillor Scobie?
Yes, Chair, I'm happy with that, just improving and upgrading road and rail infrastructure to insert it in there, so we don't lose it, because I'll be coming back as Stephen in terms of connectivity in question two B, I think it is. So, but we should include, include it in here as well as a topic.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what councillor Thompson was saying, yeah. So we can include that as a topic, and again, we can probably put the, the fishing aspect in there as well, whether it's the, I know you've got marine and coast, but I think what we're talking about, there's other aspects of it. I don't see any reason why we can't put that in. Councillor Hagman?
Thanks, Convena. So I think, I mean, I'm looking at the wording, we've, we've given examples, could be, I think, you know, there may even be merit that as a local authority, we would say these things must be included, rather than just could be, and that's our opinion, might not be taken forward. But, you know, going back to one of the first questions in three B, we referenced that there's persistent poverty and deprivation. So actually, for me, a vital component would be looking at rural poverty and inequalities, because that's not captured. We're all, we're looking at, while all these things might touch upon these, having a real laser focused on our, the issues of poverty and inequality, because we've cited that as a reason why potentially a national park could be a good thing for the region, but then if we're not going to take it forward, I, I would like to see that captured somewhere within, within this report, because I think it's absolutely vital. And it's a, it's a key priority of the local authority. You know, essentially, my view could also be that we would be putting in our council plan in these and saying, these are our priorities for our local authority. If there's, if there is to be a national park, we would want to see our priorities progressed, and that would include the, the issues of infrastructure and trunk roads, et cetera, even potentially, you know, new railway stations which form part of our stag, et cetera. So, you know, these are all points that would be useful to capture if we can. Thank you.
Thank you. What we're talking about here is what subcommittees and advisory groups should be created, so are you suggesting, uh, qualities and poverty rural?
Rural poverty and inequalities.
Well, I don't think anybody would argue with that, councillor Hagman, so councillor Wood?
Thank you, Chair. Might want to also consider the inclusion of public transport. There's obviously going to be a lot of pressure coming on to certain areas, you know, and it'd be good to try and strengthen public transport rather than dilute it as we're seeing at present.
I think we could encompass that in the connectivity and the road, infrastructure, roads, infrastructure part of it. I think we can encompass that within, within there. And as to changing the word from could, are we happy to put must or should?
Should.
Should, we'll put should. Is that, that, that's sufficient? Right, thank you. Right, question fifteen. Any comment on that? Councillor Wood?
Might want to consider putting, adding in gender balance.
Thank you. I take it that wouldn't be a problem? Councillor Hagman?
I'm not sure if it is relevant in this point, but I'll float it anyway. I mean, I'm, I'm quite content that there's a lot of legislation that protects and, and is embedded into Scots law, but is, is it worth adding into that there be an expectation of fair work across a national park and the fair work principles? I know this is about inclusivity, and perhaps it's not, but it's just a suggestion at this point. Scottish government are very keen, and certainly as a local authority, I know we're keen to embed fair work practices into everything we do, should fair work practices be included as part of a national park? Just noting that part of fair work does include trade union voices, et cetera, and it just embeds that into it. I'll leave it up to yourself and perhaps officials to, to respond if that's appropriate. Thank you.
I'm just trying to see where we could fit, fit that in on that particular question. Steve, you got a means of putting that in there?
Convena, yes, I was going to suggest that we could capture that in question twenty, and, and I think that that would highlight it more than, than doing it as a subset of question fifteen.
Thank you. Councillor Durnley?
Thank you, Convena. Linked to question fifteen, can I make a suggestion that in terms of diversity, inclusion, ethnic groups as well, that we also add disability? That disabled, disabled people have their own voice as well, so we can ensure accessibility within the national park for disabled people. And we should make that quite explicit.
Thank you. Can we make that happen, Steve? Yeah. Thank you, councillor Durnley. Okay, if there's another comment on that, move on to question sixteen, which is the timing of director elections in respect to selection of elements of the national park board. Is there any comment on that? No. Question seventeen. Any comment on that one? No. I'll give you a minute. No, he's not getting a comment. Question eighteen. No. Question nineteen, any comment on that? We're happy with the response. Councillor Bell?
You, you mentioned over the question nineteen that the kingdom of the Galloway National Park, and sometimes I've heard people say they want to call it the Sturtry Park, but I've also heard people want to say it's called a forest of red tape.
Yeah, very good, councillor Bell. So we're now going to move on to question twenty, which is a all encompassing option. Steve, I think you've already got, have, have you got things to put on question twenty already?
Convena, I think at the moment we've just captured that point about fair work and fair work practices, happy to take any others.
Do you have any other suggestions? Question twenty? So question one is looking for any further evidence and information you want to provide of the potential positive or negative environmental, social and economic impacts. Do you have anything you want to put into twenty-one? Okay. Right. So now, we will go back to question one. Councillor Dorbut?
Thank you, Convena. If, with recognition to previous debates from question two nineteen, I'd like to propose a motion regarding question one A, if that's permitted. The concept of a national park has been robustly promoted in our region since 2018, since the GP, the Galloway National Park Association issued their campaign, and it's notable that South East Shire Council have recently voted yes to a national park in principle. So when considering a national park and the opportunities it offers, we suggest maintaining the status quo, is that an option, unless that is we seek the further demise of our region and our significance in Scotland? To look at the sign on the east seventy-four, for example, as you prepare to turn left into Gretna and enter Dunfries and Galloway, it says proudly, scenic route to air. No offence to air, but the whole beautiful region of Dunfries and Galloway, lying in between, doesn't get a look in. To change this, we need investment and saying yes to investment in a national park in principle allows us to have Scottish government's ear, which is something I would suggest we need much, much more of in this region. This doesn't mean we give away our sovereignty. We, the Labour Group, believe that public sector investment should be embraced, but of course robustly scrutinised, as has been done today. Be assured our mantras on a national park at any cost, we will always put the interest of Dunfries and Galloway first. So we therefore agree with the recommendations, which have been debated by council today, by officers, that we should look to increasing local representation and expertise on the national park board. We should look to maintain the council's current regulatory powers, ensuring, for example, planning remains with us, and to ensure there should be minimal direct, indirect or recurring financial implications for the council. Suggestions by officers of a light touch national park board with increased local representation and an innovative park model is one we concur with. Currently, average salaries in Dunfries and Galloway are 12.1% below the Scottish average. We have one of the highest levels of child poverty in Scotland and the twin challenges of depopulation and an aging demographic. The area is performing less well than other rural areas in Scotland, and that's in the report at page twenty-six, appendix one. These are not issues any of us should be complacent about, and they become more acute the further west you go in the region. Funding for a national park represents an economic lifeline, we would suggest, for the many, not the few. And for the avoidance of doubt, this funding has been allocated by Scottish government for a national park and nothing else, and Dunfries and Galloway is a designated location. If we say no at this juncture, the funding will remain in Edinburgh, it will not, as some imply, be added to the council's block grant. some imply be added to the council's block grant for roads or schools or some such. If we don't use it, we lose it, and our region, our region, I would suggest, can't afford that. Rather be to think bigger and be much more ambitious and realise the potential that our region has. The opportunity to generate circa one hundred million, as quoted by the Galloway National Park Association annually into our economy via an internationally recognised national park brand must not be rejected at this stage of the process. The income would help us invest in infrastructure, which we've already discussed, affordable homes and well-paid jobs, assist with climate change objectives and make space for nature along with farming and land management. So we hope today that we'll vote yes in principle to continuing with this consultation and to putting a national park at the heart of our region. Let's embrace being brave and bold, get off the fence and take the first steps and tough decisions that will benefit and help future-proof the economy and the environment for all the people and the region of Dumfries and Galloway, and hopefully change that sign on the seventy-four to say scenic route to Galloway National Park, with apologies to air. I therefore move that this council approves a technical consultation and favours a national park and the progression of the remainder of the consultation process in principle by voting for option two in question one A, which is ten to support, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Walters.
Yeah, sorry, I would just like to second councillor Dawes' motion, although I, you know, I understand some of the concerns that have been raised about the details of a national park, the argument for the idea in principle seems longstanding and clear in terms of promoting the region nationally and internationally, so I'd just like to second councillor Dawes' motion, thanks.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Thanks Convenor, I think obviously we've gone through the detailed questions from two nineteen, two to twenty, and I think that's where we've basically set out what this council feels any national park or other would be best in terms of what this region wants, and as yet we don't have the detail in front of us. I think we're not quite at the stage where we're at any point taking a decision other than this is our submission to a consultation, we're not the determinate body, and it's already in train, so nothing we really do at this point is going to stop the process. However, I'd rather be in a position where we get a detailed proposition in front of us that takes into account the things that we're feeding back today, which includes all the things about infrastructure, local accountability, the planning system etcetera, which as yet we don't know if that's going to be included in the final draft designation. So I would move that we say we're undecided as to point question one A, but that we make the submission on the other technical points which set out what we would like to see. And similarly, I would look at the further aspect of the recommendation, sorry, that we're agreeing that we then write two point five, which we'll come on to, to then set out in a more proactive way, this is what we'd like to see, because at the moment, all we're doing is feeding back to a consultation, as is everybody else, and we're not really agreeing anything at this point in terms of whether we do or don't want it, because we don't yet know what that offer is. So I'd love to be able to take the opportunities when they're presented, but at the moment this is very much a formative exercise, and I think this is our chance to shape it rather than agree or disagree to the final proposal as yet unknown. So I'd move that we go with undecided for question one A.
Thank you councillor Hagman.
Thanks Convenor, so I would second councillor Thompson on that, I think for me there's a, you know, this has been shaped as a consultation, I would actually see this much more as a scoping exercise, there will be a further public consultation if this moves forward, and certainly we all had sight of the Cabinet Secretary for Rural Affairs, Land Reform and Islands' response to our last council meeting, and that was shared with all members, I understand, where she outlined that should it go forward, there would be a further consultation, and I think at that point we would then have much more information, I think it's fair to say I've received over fifty emails in the last twenty-four hours alone from some really passionate constituents on both sides of this discussion, so for us to say that we strongly support or strongly oppose or either tend to, I'm not able to do that because I don't know what it is that I would be supporting or opposing, so I think we need to be bold and brave and actually hold our line on this, and actually if this goes to the next stage, and that as I say is not in our gift, but if it does, we then come back and then we fully scrutinise what is on offer, but we don't know what's on offer, so how can we possibly either support or oppose something that we don't know at this point? So I would formally second councillor Thompson's motion, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dougie Campbell.
Thank you Convenor, a lot of what councillor Thompson and Hagman have said chimes, I think with what the Democratic Alliance Group are proposing as a better option rather than a yes no. And, you know, what has brought us to this point, and I'll read out the motion which you already have, so it can go up on the screen, but there's no doubt that this whole consultation process has been divisive, ill-defined and an abstract proposal. The Scottish Government has dismissed previously our call for a local referendum, so those living in the affected area, some are sitting behind us, should have a democratic vote on their future. Nature Scot public consultation has been heavily criticised on both sides for the appearance of bias and a confusing proposal that lacks clarity on the area covered, scope and structure and impact on Galloway should a national park status be awarded. Councillor Bell referred to this earlier, the Public Petitions Committee has called on the Scottish Government to instruct an independent review of the two existing national parks which were created some twenty-two years ago but have not been independently reviewed in relation to economic impacts. And finally, the Natural Environment Bill, if enacted, could legislate for a new form of national park which has not been consulted on in the context of Galloway. And what we are proposing is let's hold, take stock and allow these particular issues to pan out, and the wording of the motion is that Dumfries and Galloway Council does not respond to question one A until such times as a clearly defined proposal for Galloway National Park is presented by the Scottish Government, based on any new legislative requirements and a further wholly independent public consultation process is carried out on the said proposal in order that we and our constituents can express with confidence an evidence-based position on the future of Galloway. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Scobie.
Yeah Chair, I'm happy to second on a number of issues that Dougie has referred to, so that's, I would second Dougie's motion, that we seek defell until we do know the information, as indeed Stephen has spoken of. I'm just asking for clarity here, because there's also one B that we haven't addressed, so I have two parts to that in one B, as to when you'd be taking that one B, Chair.
Thank you councillor Scobie, obviously I knew this motion was going to be presented, so we'll deal with one A and then deal with one B, as and when if required.
Happy to second Dougie's motion.
Councillor Durnley?
Thank you Convenor. Listening to the discussion and the motions, I too have received a lot of emails both for and against, and I would support councillor Dawes' motion, that we don't delay and that we do go for this opportunity, it's a once-in-a-lifetime generation, it's easy to focus on the downsides of this, on the potential challenges to budgets, but this could help with visitor management, rail, transportation, and the council can also look at how it can protect and improve its natural assets, and look at how we can help with the rural setting and the communities within those areas. There is more details that are needed, and that would come at the next stage, so I would support the motion by councillor Dawes.
Thank you councillor Brodie.
Thank you Convenor, I'm looking at this for my role as the Chair of Attacking Poverty and Inequalities Committee, I see there's an opportunity in the development of a national park option to improve things in this area, we're at a very low ebb at the moment, especially in the western region, twenty-four percent of our children live in poverty, and an even greater percentage of our families have experienced fuel poverty as well, we have a low wage economies, areas of multiple deprivation, and we've got serious rural depopulation, so I think there's enough in our response to the government to be positive in supporting the park. If we look at page fifty-four and fifty-five of the response, it says a national park for the south-west of Scotland could provide the opportunity to utilise a compelling internationally recognised designation to provide an economic lever to build economic benefit from visitor numbers and spend. It says it could provide a renewed focus and energy to help address the twin crisis of climate change and biodiversity loss, and the resource adequacy, which is very important, a national park body would be able to advise rural economic development and entrepreneurship etcetera, etcetera. And it also says that national parks have a proven track record for attracting extra funding, national parks generate true spending and support local businesses. So I think there's enough there to take the national park consultation forward to the next stage, and I think we should take on board the many comments from both sides of the argument, because by examining the negatives and looking at them and see how we can turn them into a positive and create a model which is the best for Galloway, then I think that is the best we for us, thank you.
Thank you councillor Wood.
Thank you Chair, just to say after nearly twenty years in council, this is probably the first time I've actually sat in a hypothetical sort of situation where nobody knows what the boundaries are, nobody knows what's actually being presented, and on that basis, I'd very much go with what councillor Campbell has presented, happy to go with that.
Thank you councillor Ian Crowles.
Thanks very much, I'd just firstly congratulate you, selling you the way you've conducted the meeting today, and also the members for the professional, this could have got really quite emotive and out of hand, it would have been quite easily for that to happen, and obviously everybody's turned up, but, so I was in total support of SNP's proposal, but then Doug's coming on as leading on for the Democratic Party, and I've seen it, to me that answers both question one A precisely, and precisely for myself, and question one B for that matter, it does both at the same point, question one B would be irrelevant because of the detail that's contained within one A, I would look to support the Democratic Alliance, but certainly it's very, very close to what SNP were proposing, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hagman, you wanted to come back in?
Thank you Convenor, it's just really for a point of clarification, so I've got the motion in front of me, and I appreciate, I appreciate the sentiment of it, I'm just trying to understand what the sentence and a further wholly independent consultation process is carried out on said proposal, because we've had confirmation that a further public consultation will take place, and I'm not sure the way this is written, are we expected to do the independent consultation as in Dumfries and Galloway, and then we pay for that? Because my reading of the letter from the Cabinet Secretary and this, in terms of that specific section about an independent public consultation, that's already built into the process anyway, I was just, the clarification and just tightening up what this is actually asking for, are we asking for the whole, is it asking for the whole process to stop and accept it? I'm just not clear what the, and how competent the actual wording is of this one, so if I could get clarity, that would be helpful.
Thank you, councillor Campbell, can you provide illumination?
I think that the motion is quite clear, we're simply saying to Nature Scot and the Scottish Government that yes, we have prepared a consultation response if a national park was to become a reality, and there's a lot of excellent material in there that's been gathered by officers. But again, just to reiterate, there are a number of outstanding issues that I would like to see addressed before we reach the point of actually voting on whether there should be a national park or not, because we don't know what that national park actually is. So again, just to reiterate, it's clear, you know, as a council, we unanimously, or not unanimously, overwhelmingly voted for calling the Scottish Government to carry out an independent, sorry, a referendum on the Galloway National Park. There is huge concern about Nature Scot's public consultation process, my view is that the majority of people in Galloway don't favour a national park, and they have no confidence in the consultation process, so as I said there, there needs to be a reset, establish what it actually is that is being proposed for us to support or otherwise, and until such times as we have that clarity, it would be unreasonable, I think, for us to take a decision today on behalf of our constituents.
Thank you councillor Campbell, I'll just ask Blad for a bit of clarity on that, are you happy that councillor Hagman raised the question, that competency of that, is that an issue? I don't think so, but is it?
Thank you Convenor, I totally get the question, however, I think the way the motion's framed is open enough and flexible enough in terms of incorporating that independent public consultation, I think is what councillor Campbell's looking for there.
Can I just get clarity, are we asking the Scottish Government to conduct an independent, or would we be as Dumfries and Galloway Council, because it's not clear who would be responsible for the cost of that independent consultation? Because government are doing one anyway, so are we expected to pick up the bill for that? And if it's not, can we just maybe include, well, it'd be up to the mover of the motion, but just so we're really clear for the cost of that?
Thank you, councillor Campbell.
Send the gift to the Scottish Government.
Okay, so councillor Stevenson?
Hey, thank you Chair, I've just got some questions on this, if the consultation's flawed in Dumfries and Galloway, then is it flawed in the other two councils, and if it is, then we shouldn't be conducting a, you know, our own public consultation, it would have to be the Scottish Government, because how can one-third of a national park or a potential national park conduct an independent consultation without consulting the other two councils, I don't quite fully understand how that would be encapsulated, thank you.
I think councillor Campbell is suggesting it's the Scottish Government, do you want to make that explicit on it, Dougie?
I think it is explicit Convenor, we're not calling on Dumfries and Galloway Council to carry out a consultation, because we wouldn't be independent, I don't think, and the Scottish Government appointed Nature Scot to carry out the consultation, there are clear concerns about the manner which that has been conducted. So again, I would reiterate, it's a decision for the Scottish Government, unfortunately they chose to ignore our request for a referendum, but I'm not at this point willing to agree to any amendments to the motion as it stands.
Thank you, Dougie. Thank you, I think we're just going to have to move to the vote on this, so, oh councillor, is it Ingalls, councillor Ingalls, what?
Thanks Convenor, and thank you for conducting this meeting in such a professional manager, aye, manner, as councillor Carruthers has said. If I'm reading the room correctly, our view hasn't changed since we supported the national park bidding principle. At that time, we were looking for detail, we wanted information, it would appear that that is the case still today, most people are looking for that. Most people are looking for that detail before we can suggest that we actually support a national park, which is fair enough. We're not there. We're still in the position where we have an opportunity to support this in principle until the next stage, which is where all that detail will eventually come back to us and then the consultation process will start again and that's when the decision's made. So I find it really difficult to understand why elected members are not prepared to stand by their decision last year to support this in principle by actually verbally stating that. Because that's exactly what they're saying. They're still waiting on that information. As you'll know, councillor Justy, councillor Marsh and myself, we support this, we tend to support this. So we will be looking for option two in question one A and we will support the Labour Group with that. We're quite happy to pin our colours to the mast and push this forward because this is important for Galloway, it's important for Dumfries and Galloway. And we need to take this to the next stage to get the information that everybody's looking for. And this indecision by this council is tantamount to dereliction of duty. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
Thank you, convener. Could I ask councillor Campbell for clarification? The council voted by a large majority to have a referendum. Where would the referendum fit into his motion?
It's not in the motion. It was a preamble or a reference to why we came to the decision to submit this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, thanks, convener. So I think at this point today, you know, I'm very clear that where we're at is just at a point in somebody else's consultation. And I think, I'd thought about whether or not to answer question one, but I think just in terms of answering the consultation, all we're saying is we'll answer question one when we say we're undecided. I've no particular position to make. I can see the opportunities of a national park if it's done in the way we would like it to be, but that's not what's in front of us today. So I'm not going to try and paint an imaginary picture of everything and everything that's possible under the sun because that's not what we're looking at. We don't even know what shape a national park would be, nor do we know even the way of concerns about potential negative impacts. We don't really know what, we know what they could be at worst, but we don't really know what they are because that's not what's in front of us. So the best position I can put forward, which is why I've put forward the amendment, is to say we're undecided because we're given all the other details and we should write proactively as per the next recommendation that we'll come to. So I think it's cleaner, it's simpler and today's not the day to die in a ditch over it. I think we just need to give a response to the technical consultation because the next step is up to Nature Scotland and the Scottish Government and it'll come back to us anyway with more detail. So I would just maintain that for the amendment, which is to give undecided as a response to question one A. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, in that case, we'll go to a vote. So we have a motion. Vlad, will you go through the details?
Yes, thank you, convener. Members, just as I captured it and hopefully I've captured it correctly, I think we've got a motion that was put forward by councillor Dorwood and that was for option two, tend to support. Is that correct? Yep. And that was seconded by councillor Walters. Then we have an amendment to that, just in terms of the order, how it came in, councillor Thompson, which is for undecided option five, and that was seconded by councillor Hagman. And lastly, we've got a counter amendment which was put forward by councillor Dougie Campbell and that was not to respond to question one A. And members have seen the full wording of that motion and that was seconded by councillor Scobie. Is every word clear on the motion, amendment and counter amendment? Councillor Marsh?
Sorry, Vlad, I was not paying attention at the start. Could you please, for my benefit, repeat that? Thank you. Sorry.
Yes, yeah, no problem. So we had a motion from councillor Dorwood and that was option two, tend to support. And that was seconded by councillor Walters. Then we've got an amendment from councillor Thompson that was seconded by councillor Hagman for option five and that's undecided option. And then we've had a counter amendment from councillor Dougie Campbell, which was not to respond to question one A at all, and that was seconded by councillor Scobie. And as members will have seen also, there was that kind of motion attached to that. Is that clear for all in terms of the three? We've got a motion, an amendment and a counter amendment and therefore in terms of standing orders, we'll start off with the counter amendment and amendment first. So we'll go through that voting first and then we'll move on to the next roll call after that, if that's okay. I think everyone's happy and content with that, so we'll proceed to the roll call. As I said, counter amendment and amendment first. Convener?
Amendment.
Deputy convener?
Amendment.
Councillor Bell?
Counter.
Councillor Barretti?
Amendment.
Councillor Blake?
Amendment.
Councillor Brody?
Amendment.
Councillor Dougie Campbell?
Counter.
Councillor John Campbell?
Amendment.
Councillor Ian Carruthers?
Counter.
Councillor Karen Carruthers?
Counter.
Councillor Dashbar?
Counter.
Councillor Davis?
Amendment.
Councillor Dempster?
Abstain.
Councillor Dennerley?
Amendment.
Councillor Dorwood?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Driver?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Councillor Drysdale?
Counter, please.
Councillor Ferguson?
Amendment.
Councillor Justy?
Amendment.
Councillor Hagman?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Howe? Councillor Howie?
Counter.
Councillor Ingalls?
Amendment.
Councillor Jamieson?
Amendment.
Councillor Maureen Johnson?
Counter.
Councillor Jordan?
Abstain, please.
Councillor Little?
Amendment.
Councillor Low?
Amendment, please.
Councillor McCammon? Councillor McFarlane?
Amendment.
Councillor Marsh?
Amendment.
Councillor Marshall? Yeah, okay. Councillor Scobie?
He's written abstain in the chat.
Okay, abstain, yeah. Okay, sorry, councillor Scobie?
Amendment.
Councillor Stevenson?
Amendment.
Councillor Stett?
Amendment.
Councillor Thompson?
Amendment.
Councillor Walters?
Abstain, please.
Councillor Wilson?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Wood?
Counter.
Councillor Young?
Amendment.
Okay, as members will see, we have ten for the counter, twenty-five for the amendment. As a result, the amendment goes through to the motion, roll call. So we'll move that to the next bit. So amendment and motion. So hopefully all members are clear on these, so we'll move to the roll call. Convener?
Amendment.
Deputy convener?
Amendment.
Councillor Bell?
Amendment.
Councillor Barretti?
Amendment.
Councillor Blake?
Amendment.
Councillor Brody?
Motion.
Councillor Dougie Campbell?
Amendment.
Councillor John Campbell?
Amendment.
Councillor Ian Carruthers?
Amendment.
Councillor Karen Carruthers?
Amendment.
Councillor Dashbar?
Amendment.
Councillor Davis? Councillor Dempster?
Motion.
Councillor Dennerley?
Motion.
Councillor Dorwood?
Motion, please.
Councillor Driver?
Motion.
Councillor Drysdale?
Amendment.
Councillor Ferguson?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Justy?
Motion.
Councillor Hagman?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Howie?
Amendment.
Councillor Ingalls?
Motion.
Councillor Jamieson?
Amendment.
Councillor Maureen Johnson?
Amendment.
Councillor Jordan?
Motion, please.
Councillor Little?
Amendment.
Councillor Low?
Amendment, please.
Councillor McCammon?
Motion.
Councillor McFarlane?
Amendment.
Councillor Marsh?
Motion.
Councillor Marshall has indicated motion. Councillor Scobie?
Amendment.
Councillor Slater?
Amendment.
Councillor Stevenson?
Motion, please.
Councillor Stett?
Motion.
Councillor Thompson?
Amendment.
Councillor Walters?
Motion, please.
Councillor Wilson?
Motion, please.
Councillor Wood?
Amendment.
Councillor Young?
Amendment.
Okay, as members will see, the motion got fifteen, the amendment's twenty-five and therefore the amendment is carried.
Thank you, Vlad. We now move on to question one B. Councillor Scobie?
Thank you, Chair. Can I echo the sentiments in the way that you've conducted the meeting today? It's been a credit to you. On page fifty-six of one B, and maybe if Vlad could put it up, I've submitted an addendum there or an added paragraph on page fifty-six to the first, following the first paragraph there, that reads, irrespective of Galloway being designated, I think it's appropriate at this time with national park status, we should expect to receive the same investment from the Scottish Government, just as it would be awarded to a national park area, to address the multiple deprivation and depopulation that exists in huge numbers of areas in Galloway. So that follows, you know, it's appropriate to put that paragraph in, I would say, Chair. And I can read out the second one if you want. Yeah, and that's on page fifty-six as well. And this is reference to the discussions and debate we've had on the road infrastructure. And this is to the A seventy-seven, A seventy-five. Should Galloway be designated with national park status, the A seventy-seven and A seventy-five? I say it should, but maybe I should put must be, the A seventy-seven, A seventy-five must be improved with commitment from the Scottish Government to improve these trunk roads due to the anticipated impact and increased demand. This should must be supported by a twenty to thirty-year plan to upgrade both the A seventy-seven, A seventy-five to dual carriageway standards. I would ask that these two be put in, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Howie?
Thank you, convener. It's on page fifty-three, I believe. There's a copy of it to be put up on the screen as well, if it's possible to do that at this time. Or you can check my reading out loud if you wish. Bullet point three, housing and the wider public services. The potential impact on the region's affordable housing stock, the region has declared a housing emergency and is working to address this. A national park could impact on housing prices across the region, although the exact impact isn't clear and we are aware that the existing national parks in Scotland, affordable housing provision is higher than adjacent areas. And this is what I'd like included, please. However, despite these measures, research from 2022 tells us that seventy-five per cent of national park residents cannot afford average house prices, impacting on businesses who are unable to recruit staff to meet growing demand.
Thank you, councillor Howie. Is there anyone? I think, if you don't mind, unless, is it on those two? Yeah, okay, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, so thanks, convener. It was just really around, I won't get into the specifics of particular infrastructure, but I would support that there is that national investment to improve infrastructure, whether it's road, rail or otherwise. And again, that could tie in because we don't yet know what it's going to look like. So, but we'd expect that national, sort of national looking in to support the designation of a national park because we have to consider, there's people coming here potentially, so how are they getting here from elsewhere? That's out with the region, so it has to be a national consideration. So we'd expect that infrastructure investment befitting of any particular designation that may go forward.
So is that in relation in particular to the roads that are mentioned?
Yeah, so page fifty-three, connectivity. Thank you.
Okay. Because I'm assuming part of your argument with that is, if you just mention those roads, then it's prescriptive to those roads and not a wider?
I would say including the trunk roads and rail infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, I think we're always quite happy with that. Councillor Jamieson?
We're still on the same subject or can we bring up another topic?
No, I think at the moment we've dealt with those, so councillor Jamieson?
It's a small thing, but I think it merits being included amongst the concerns about certain aspects. I would like just a line in that we recognise the concerns of commercial farmers, the potential impact on their competitiveness in a global market, particularly in milk and livestock, but particularly in milk where most of the milk goes to multinational companies. So there's, many farmers feel that it may impact on their competitiveness if some of the potential restrictions impact on their ability to be efficient and produce milk competitively. So it's just a line to recognise that this is a concern because in the preamble, there are also concerns about a number of aspects. So I feel it's only fair that the NFUS and the local NFU, Dumfries and Galloway have expressed concerns. Now, they may be mitigated, but I think we need to raise them on their behalf.
Thank you. Liddo, you want to come in?
Just very briefly, and councillor Thompson covered the point around infrastructure. I don't, I'm getting slightly concerned that we're now dipping into sort of anecdotal quotes rather than evidenced submissions that have been fact checked. No disrespect to councillor Howie, but I don't know where the seventy-five per cent of national park residents' data has come from. So I think we need to be quite specific about that.
I can do that.
And again, in terms of farming and agriculture, perhaps it just needs to be a wider because NFUS can submit their own consultation response anyway. It's about the impact on agriculture, full stop. You know, I think we should steer away from anecdotal personal feelings about things. Sorry.
Councillor Howie?
Thank you, convener. It was an article published in the Herald on Wednesday, twenty-eighth July. It was written actually by Stuart Maynard, National Park Authority Director of Police for Loch Lomond National Park, they're head speakers.
Councillor Muff?
Thank you, convener. No, I was just going to come-
Thank you convener, no, I was just going to come in, precisely what councillor McGregor has just said, we don't have those facts in front of us today, I think this is all a bit last minute and verging on personal, I'm not sure that this addition, that we have no actual hard evidence of, should be submitted.
Councillor Scobie?
Surely we can attach that to our submission, so that we have the evidence and it's the authority of the person writing from National Park Association, so we can include that and attach it to our response as a reference point.
I think as well with that, you could get the sentiment of what you're saying councillor Howie across without a specific number, you know, because what we are talking about is the effect on house prices in the national park areas and concerns on that, on that level, would that be of any benefit, are you determined just putting your numbers in?
I would rather go with the figure that was presented in their research, as opposed to me make one up or hair either side of it, the figure's there, to be seen.
Thing as well is, I mean, has the Herald fact checked it as well, right? Vlad?
Completely understand both sides of this, I don't know if it's helpful or otherwise, whether when we are stating that research has been carried out, I think it's just simply inserting the source of that research to make it and clarify exactly where that's coming from, and obviously it's for the Scottish Government to then consider that particular research, if that's okay with members.
I think that would be helpful, councillor Ingalls?
Surely there's a governance issue here, we're being asked to put this and make a decision of putting this into this document today, we've had no site of it, we don't know where that information's coming from other than what we're being told, we don't know whether it's factual, and we're making the decision today, now, I'm sorry, but I think that should come out.
That's really the direction of travel for myself, is that, I fully get the sentiment, and I would be, I don't know if anybody else would disagree, but I get the sentiment, but perhaps they put the numbers in for they're not being verified, councillor Hagman?
Thanks convener, I mean, I'll just come in on this topic, because we're now having a debate on it, I think we've debated all these points throughout and we've asked, you know, we're going to listen back to the recording, I'm happy to agree the inclusion of that, and think caveatting on what Vlad has just said of just simply inserting the source, and I think that goes inconsistent with all the discussions that we've had today, I'm not quite sure why we're getting caught up on this particular line, thank you.
Okay, so are we content, or maybe not content, but are we happy to go ahead on that basis, where we insert that, so councillor Marsh?
I just, I take umbrage at this, because I could then start quoting and saying, currently both national parks in Scotland have statistics out there that show they offer double the percentage of Scotland's affordable housing requirement, you know, where are we going to stop adding these additions here today, are you going to take that from wee ad lib as I've said it there, like, I just don't think it's appropriate to be adding this.
I think if we just put the source, I think it would cover it, I think, you know, it would be helpful just to insert it and put the source, so are we happy just to let that go, yeah, yeah, okay, thank you, and as for the comments from, at the start, the two things from councillor Scobie, we're happy to incorporate those as well with the caveat about the connectivity and the infrastructure, right, thank you, well, I think that's that. Oh, councillor Campbell?
Sorry Chair, it's me again, is it, are you going to let me in Chair, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead. You steal my time Pauline.
Oh, sorry, do you want to come in councillor Campbell, if you were before me?
No, I can see you or sense that you're on the edge of your seat Pauline, so go for it.
But you're right, it was just one issue that had arisen and I had sent an email to an officer, Simon Fieldhouse, who very kindly got back to me really quickly, but it was only today that I got the response to this, and I'd just like to raise it, so that we can be aware of it with regards to the response, so a number of farmers and landowners have been contacting myself with regards to the compulsory purchase orders that are conferred under Part Five of Schedule Two of the National Parks Scotland Act, which means that a national park in conjunction with Nature Scotland's similar powers can use their compulsory purchase orders with regards to things like peatland restoration and forestation etcetera, so I'm wondering if we need to include that in this report at some stage, but I would take officers' advice on that Chair, and also legal guidance, and I don't know if it's something we want to come back with at a later stage, maybe in phase two, thanks.
Thank you, Steve, could you pick up on that at all?
Yeah, certainly, convener, we can pick up on that and make reference to it in the appropriate part of the response, probably the one that talks about legal powers and responsibilities.
With this as well, with the number of changes that we've had and all the input, we'd really appreciate that we get to see the report before it's submitted, the final draft, to ensure that everything's captured, just to make sure, there's been quite a few suggestions and I think it would be useful, Don, do you want to come in?
I will, and there've been a number of contributions today that clearly the recording will help with in terms of changes to the documentation, and within the recommendations, you'll see reference to a high level response in addition to the technical response you've considered today, that based on the discussion today, we would be looking to develop and seek agreement through group leaders, so I'd suggest we use the same route and share the final version, as we see it, of the technical response alongside the high level response, should you agree that within your recommendations, so group leaders will be able to consult with members within the group before we submit.
Thank you, so on that basis, I would just like to move to the recommendations, if I could, so we were asked at two point one to agree moving delegation, which we did, two point two, note that activity in the current consultation period which expires on fourteenth February twenty twenty-five as described in paragraphs four point six to four point eight, two point three, consider and agree the draft response to the Scottish Government's Galloway National Park consultation as outlined in appendix two, two point four, subject to certain, at two point three, note that this is the council's formal response to the consultation, and that individual elected members may wish to make their own submissions to the consultation through the online portal prior to the deadline on fourteenth of February twenty twenty-five. At two point five, agree that a high level covering letter is prepared and submitted to Nature Scotland as part of the consultation to clarify the council's position as outlined in paragraph four point fourteen, through discussion and agreement by group leaders. And two point six, note the next steps outlined in paragraph four point fourteen to four point fifteen, including that the consultation responses will be evaluated by Nature Scotland acting as the reporter for the Scottish Government to provide Scottish ministers with a report for consideration on whether to proceed with the designation of Galloway as a new national park, so we're happy to agree one, three and five, and note two, four and six, okay, thank you, any other business deemed urgent by the chairman? No, oh sorry councillor Campbell?
Could I just quickly come in, I would like personally to thank the officers for the preparation of this consultation document, it couldn't have been an easy process to try and navigate, and we saw some pretty good dynamic amendments being made today, so, you know, I think I would speak for us all that we appreciate the work that you've put into this document, thank you.
Thank you, well said councillor Campbell, so no other business, so bring the meeting to a close, thank you.